I'm going to call the order. Board of Commissioners Work Session Agenda, March 18th, 2025. The time is now four oh four. Moving on to Item Number Two, Work Session Topics. Sarah, I think you got the floor the whole time, don't you?
Yes, I do. Thank you, guys. Good afternoon. I'm actually gonna turn it over to Mark. He came up today from Tampa, and he is with our broker, USI. And him and Deana, their team down there have been working, okay, thank you, on a couple items. So, over the last two years, we've been hearing a lot of these kind of topics that you see on your agenda right there. And so, I've asked them to do some research. He put together this little PowerPoint to go over with you guys. We thought we'd do it in a work session, so you have the time to ask questions and give him some feedback, and maybe just bounce some ideas off of him. He's also going to tell you some options that they came up with, and just some different scenarios, and see what we want to do for the future. So, Mark, I'll turn it over to you, and then we can kind of just have some dialogue and see where it goes, okay?
Perfect. Appreciate it, Sarah. How's everybody doing today?
Very good.
Good, good. Well, like Sarah had mentioned, I've been working with you guys for quite some time now, and there's employee benefits in general. There's always, you know, things that can be changed or altered to, you know, what fits you best, or fits a different company best. So, today's, really, some of the topics that I wanted to cover today was the High Deductible Health Plan slash HSA. So, with an HSA account, it essentially has to be tied to a high deductible health plan. And not to get into weeds by any means on that, but essentially, if your deductible is four or five thousand dollars, whatever it might be, you have to hit that number before the plan kicks into place. But, the reason people do that is to have a health savings account, HSA. It's a tax-free benefit. It's something that your employees can take with them, no matter what, or when they retire, it's their money. And it can be used for all kinds of different types of things, as long as it's health-related. It could be, you know, glasses, dental work, co-pays, co-insurance, et cetera. It's very, very simple to add this. It's really easy. Essentially, your vendor that we go through right now is Infinisource. All we have to do is say, hey, we want to add a health savings account that's going to be tied to the High Deductible Health Plan.
But, we do have the health savings accounts now.
Yes, you do.
Which you're saying, okay.
We want to, essentially, we want to add an additional one, is what it is.
Yeah, it's different.
Or an FSA, I apologize, you're right. FSA, Flexible Spending Account. I should say, do you know the difference between an FSA and an HSA?
I think I do, but I'm not sure.
I'll explain it real quick. So, FSA, HSA, they're very similar. They're tax savings accounts that essentially you put money aside to. The difference, though, is the FSA has a limit where it will not roll over. So, I'll just give you a quick example. If I put a thousand dollars in this year myself to an FSA, I have to hopefully spend that thousand dollars, because next year, when I go through open enrollment, all of it's not going to roll over.
Yeah.
I think that's what Jenny has.
There's a limit right now of six hundred and sixty dollars that will roll over. So, your four hundred.
That's what she's got.
Yeah, your four hundred and forty dollars, you would lose. Not ideal for an employee, right? You don't want to lose.
Who gets it?
It literally goes right back to the, well, Infinisource, the government.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, but with an HSA, there's not even a rollover, because it's a bank account. It's your money, right? So, again, I actually have an HSA. I've had one for ten years now. If I leave my company, if I retire, whatever it is, that is my money. It is my bank account. And again, I can utilize that for anything that's health-related. And that goes as far as sunscreen, chapstick, Band-Aids. Yes, so ideally, opening up one of them, but educating the employees on the difference between FSA and HSA is always a very key part of, I would suggest if we're going to do this, rolling that out now, and then really during open enrollment, you have that conversation with them, or I do. So, and that's what we talk about, that, you know, sending out, you know, the monthly quarterly education flyers, and then once we get up to open enrollment, we'll educate them on that.
Can you have both?
You cannot. No, you can, it's only one or the other.
About limits, it's the same on both, or is it different?
I think there's a tax-free, right? Tax-free for HSA up to a certain amount that you can fund.
It is. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I think for an individual, it's like four thousand eight hundred. For a family, it's like eight thousand six hundred per year that you can contribute to it, so.
Same thing with FSA, is the same, or is it different?
FSA is a little bit lower on the maximum, so there is a cap on that, too.
Our maximum is the thirty-three hundred, which we did this year.
That's right, went up from last year.
Yeah, yep. And that's all federal regulated. It's not something that we control. It's what the government allows us.
Forty-one fifty for individuals, eighty-three hundred for family, and then an additional thousand if you're over, I think, fifty-five.
Exactly, yep.
Same thing we have with Georgia Power.
Yep, yep. So, looking to add that this year, is there questions? Any other questions on the HSA/FSA? Okay. The other topic that we really want to talk about was dependent healthcare, which is also called an HRA. A lot of acronyms here, but essentially, this is the same thing that we can set up through Infinisource, but it's really designed for your children, right? Or your dependents. So, it's specifically to them. There are certain things that you can pay for. Daycare is going to be one of them, so someone, you know, has to, you know, pay for daycare, we know that's not cheap. Again, it's a tax savings account there, but it's really simple to open up. We essentially tell Infinisource, hey, we want to open this up, and then we set our limits on it. Now, you, as Effingham County, can decide on the total amount that you want to contribute, if you want to contribute to it. It can also just be me as the employee that says, hey, I'm going to put a thousand dollars away this year. You, as Effingham County, you can say, hey, I'm going to match your thousand dollars if you do this, or I'm going to put five hundred dollars towards this. And that's the same thing, actually, as an HSA, too. You can contribute the same way to that, but it gives essentially families another option or opportunity to kind of set money aside on a tax savings aspect of that. Another thing, another topic that really got brought up was your significant other coverage. That is not something essentially that is covered right now, but that can be added at any point in time. We do not have to wait to open enrollment for that. So, if you came together and said, hey, we want to start covering Cinemac and others, domestic partners, or whatever it might be, all we have to do is let the carrier know, which is Maritain slash Aetna, and then we can essentially allow them to start being covered on that. You can do that now. You can wait to roll that out during open enrollment, which, you know, would be towards the end of the year, the first of the year, technically. But, it is a, I'll put it this way. I work with a lot of different clients, and it is a very, very common benefit that people offer, so. Questions with that? That's pretty straightforward. I think one of the main topics that I wanted to talk about is the last two, is the gap coverage option for retirees or employees that are approaching that retirement age, right? So, we'll get into this here in a second, but essentially, what we want to do is we want to create an option for anybody that is approaching that age that, you know, might want to get off the plan. And there's a couple reasons, not only for them to want to do that, but for you, as a county, that might want to do that, too. We all know the older you get, probably the more healthcare, you know, expenses you're going to incur, and by doing that, it affects your plan. You know, the more claims you have that hit the plan, the harder it is to keep those costs down year over year. So, there's options that I'm going to walk through here in a second on that. There's actually two options, two great options that we have. And the final thing that we're also going to walk through is the Imaging Center Discount Program. I think this is a phenomenal program. It is a benefit strictly to your employees. It does not affect your plan. It does not affect Effingham County at all. Essentially, they are contracted through radiology centers. So, you think MRIs, CAT scans, bone density scans, anything like that. It's not costing you. It's not costing the employee. They're getting reimbursed from these radiology centers. So, I'm going to talk about those here next. So, let's start with gap coverage, and think of this more as you approach the retirement age coverage, right? There's two options that you have here. One, the first option is you're with Maritain right now, or Aetna. You'll hear the same thing, they're the same company. We can just simply add a new division starting next year. And what that would allow us to do is really set parameters on how we want. And our example here, this is all it is, is an example, is if I'm an employee here for the county, and I'm between the age fifty-five and sixty-five, I can become eligible for this plan, right? As I start to approach retirement age. The contributions can be different. So, one of the things is, like, how do you contribute to, you know, this plan versus this plan? Is it discrimination, is it not? Well, it's not when you set it up underneath a division with the parameters that I'm showing here. For example, right now, Effingham County pays, you know, fifty percent of the premium. You could do that for this new division plan that we would add, the retirement plan. You could also not contribute. You can contribute more if you want. That is completely up to you. And ultimately, this is going to be covered underneath what is your current stop-loss, which is Optum. Really, what this is doing is getting them off of the current kind of self-funded plan that the county's on, and putting them into their own plan. So, there are claims that they incur over the year.
In general, there's always, you know, things that can be changed or altered to, uh, you know, what fits you best or fits a different company best. So today's, uh, really some of the topics that I wanted to cover today was, uh, the high deductible health plan slash HSA. So with an HSA account essentially has to be tied to a high deductible health plan and then not to get into weeds by any, any means on that. But essentially if your deductible is four or five thousand dollars, whatever it might be, you have to hit that number before the plan kicks into place. But the reason people do that is to have a health savings account, HSA. It's a tax-free benefit. It's something that your employees can take with them no matter what, or when they retire, it's their money. And it can be used for all kinds of different types of things as long as it's health related. It could be, you know, glasses, dental work, co-pays, co-insurance, et cetera. It's very, very simple to add this. It's, it's really easy. Essentially your vendor that we go through right now is Infineosource. All we have to do is say, hey, we want to add a health savings account that's going to be tied to the high deductible health plan.
Well, we do have the health savings accounts now.
Yes, you do.
Saying, okay.
We wanted, essentially we want to add an additional one.
Okay.
Is what it is. Or an FSA. I apologize. You're right. FSA, flexible spending account. I should say, do you know the difference between an FSA and an HSA?
I think I do, but I'm not sure.
I'll explain it real quick. So FSA, HSA, um, they're very similar. They're tax savings accounts that, that essentially you put money aside to. The difference though is the FSA has a limit, um, where it will not roll over. So I'll just give you a quick example. If I put a thousand dollars in this year myself to an FSA, I have to hopefully spend that thousand dollars because next year when I go through open enrollment, all of it's not going to roll over. There's a limit right now of six hundred and sixty dollars that will roll over. So your four hundred. Yeah, your four hundred and forty dollars you would lose. Not ideal for an employee, right? And you don't want to lose.
Who gets it?
It, it literally goes right back to the, well, Infineosource, the government. Exactly. So, but with an HSA, there, there, there's not even a rollover because it's a bank account. It's your money. Right? So again, I actually have an HSA. I've had one for 10 years now. If I leave my company, if I retire, whatever it is, that is my money. It is my bank account. And again, I can utilize that for anything that's health related. And that goes as far as, uh, sunscreen, uh, chapstick, uh, Band-Aids. Yes. So ideally opening up one of them and, but educating the employees on the difference between FSA and HSA is always a very key part of, I would suggest if we're going to do this, rolling that out now. And then really during open enrollment, you have that conversation with them or, or I do. So, and that's what we talk about that, you know, sending out, you know, the monthly quarterly education flyers. And then once we get up to open enrollment, we'll educate them on that.
Can you have both?
You cannot. No, you can, it's only one or the other.
About limits. It's the same on both or is it different?
I think there's a tax-free, right? Tax-free for HSA up to a certain amount that you can fund.
It is. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I, I think for an individual, it's like four thousand eight hundred. For a family, it's like eight thousand six hundred. Per year that you can contribute to it. So.
Same thing with FSA is the same or is it different?
FSA is a little bit lower on the, on the, on the maximum. Um, so there is a cap on that too.
Our maximum is the thirty-three hundred, which we did this year.
That's right. Went up from last year.
Yeah. Yep. And that's all federal regulated. It's not something that we control. It's, it's what the government.
Forty-one fifty for individuals, um, eighty-three hundred for family and then an additional thousand if you're over, I think fifty-five.
Exactly. Yep.
Same thing we have with Georgia Power.
Yep. Yep. So, um, looking to add that this year, uh, is there questions? Any other questions on the HSA FSA? Okay. The other, uh, topic that we really want to talk about was dependent healthcare, uh, which is also called an HRA. A lot of acronyms here, but, um, essentially this is the same thing that we can set up through Infineosource. But it, it's really designed for your children, right? Or, or your dependents. So it's specifically to them. There, there are certain things that you can pay for. Daycare is, is going to be one of them. So someone, you know, has to, you know, pay for daycare. We know that's not, uh, cheap. Again, it's a tax savings account there, um, but it's really simple to open up. We essentially tell Infineosource, hey, we want to open this up and then we set our limits on it. Now you as Effingham County can decide, uh, on the total amount that you want to contribute, if you want to contribute to it. It can also just be me as the employee that says, hey, I'm going to put a thousand dollars away this year. You as Effingham County, you can say, hey, I'm going to match your thousand dollars if you do this, or I'm going to put five hundred dollars towards this. And that's the same thing actually as an HSA too. You can contribute the same way to that. But it gives, uh, essentially families, uh, another option or opportunity to, uh, kind of set money aside on a tax savings, um, aspect of that. Another thing, another topic that really got, um, brought up was your significant other coverage. That is not something, um, essentially that is covered right now, but that can be added at any point in time. We do not have to wait to open enrollment for that. So if, uh, you came together and said, hey, we want to start covering significant others, domestic partners or whatever it might be. All we have to do is let the carrier know, which is Maritain slash Aetna. And then we can essentially allow them to be, start being covered on that. You can do that now. You can wait to roll that out during open enrollment, which, you know, would be towards the end of the year, the first of the year technically. But it is a, I'll, I'll put it this way. I work with a lot of different clients and it is a very, very common, um, benefit that people offer. So. Questions with that? That's pretty straightforward. I think one of the main topics that I wanted to talk about is the last two. Is the, uh, gap coverage option for retirees or employees that are approaching that retirement age, right? So we'll get into this here in a second, but essentially what we want to do is we want to create an option for anybody that is approaching that age that, you know, might want to get off the plan. And there's a couple, a couple of reasons, not only for them to want to do that, but for you as a county that might want to do that too. We all know the older you get, probably the more healthcare, you know, expenses you're going to incur. And by doing that, uh, it affects your plan, you know? The more claims you have that hit the plan, the harder it is to, uh, keep those costs down year over year. So there's options that I'm going to walk through here in a second on that. There's actually two options, two great options that we have. And the final, um, thing that we're also going to walk through is the imaging center discount program. I think this is a phenomenal program. It is a benefit strictly to your employees. It does not affect your plan. It does not affect, uh, Effingham County at all. Essentially they are contracted through radiology centers. So you think MRIs, CAT scans, bone density scans, anything like that. It's not costing you. It's not costing the employee. They're getting reimbursed from these radiology centers. So I'm going to talk about those here next. So let's start with gap coverage, um, and think of this more as, as you approach the retirement age coverage, right? There's two options that you have here. One, the first option is you're with Maritain right now, um, or Aetna. You'll hear the same thing. They're the same company. We can just simply add a new division starting next year. And what that would allow us to do is really set parameters on how we want. And our example here, this is all it is in example, is if I'm an employee here for the county and I'm between the age fifty-five and sixty-five, I can become eligible for this plan, right? As I start to approach retirement age. The contributions can be different. So one of the things is like, how do you contribute to, you know, this plan versus this plan? Is it discrimination? Is it not? Well, it's not when you set it up underneath a different division with the parameters that I'm showing here. For example, right now Effingham County pays, you know, fifty percent of the premium. You could do that for this new division plan that we would add, the retirement plan. You could also not contribute. You can contribute more if you want. That is completely up to you. And ultimately this is going to be covered underneath what is your current stop loss, um, which is Optum. Really what this is doing is getting them off of the current kind of self-funded plan that the county's on and putting them into their own plan. So their, their claims that they incur over the year are going to be in their own bucket versus everybody else's bucket. It's a lot easier to separate and you almost negotiate differently on each plan. That's one way. The other way, which I think is maybe something that, you know, we can have this conversation right now. We can think about it. We can have more conversations. Is what we call a retiree HRA, um, as a health reimbursement account essentially. What we would do here is, um, we would set this up and it would be funded by Effingham County. On the, on the premiums, it would also get these employees that are approaching that sixty-five age and older to, um, Medicare. And it would cover though their prescription drugs. It would cover their medication. Nothing changes on really their aspect of it and what they're seeing. But the plan designs and how we want to fund it are on us, right? Essentially the way, the best way I can put this is you're setting aside a savings account for people that are in this bucket. And they can utilize this. Not only can they utilize this while they're still working here, but when they retire. For example, I have a client that does this that funds twenty thousand dollars. When they retire, that twenty thousand dollars is for them to utilize for their healthcare. It's set though underneath the HRA essentially. Again, how you want to fund it, what your thoughts are, those are all conversations that probably need to be thought about and then had later. But to me, I have a lot of clients that really have this account set, set to the side for people that are approaching that retirement age. And it's a great way to not only migrate them off your plan to get those claims off, but it gives them a reason to do this. Another thing about this is, um, you can set parameters, for example, you have to work here for a minimum of two years before this gets funded. I'm just throwing that out there. You can set the parameter however you want. And then you can also decide while they're working here, what limit they can spend on that. I'm not recommending doing that. I would say if it's their money, let them use their money how they should. But again, this is a high level, you know, overview of how do we deal with fifty-five and older is, is really kind of the benchmark that we set, um, for them. Ideally it'll drive costs down too on your, on your current plan by setting up a HRA on the side like this. So I'll stop right here, um, see if there's questions, thoughts, comments, and if there's not, that's okay. I know it's, um, kind of a broad topic here, but.
I, I got a quick question on, um.
A little more details.
The health retirement account. No, I'm sorry. On, uh, on the health retirement account, what were you just talking about for, um, retirees?
Yes.
Make, let me make sure I understand this. This sets up a contribution to an account and, but that person has to not be on our plan. So they'd be going on to what Medicare?
So they're technically on your plan, but when you set it up this way.
Yeah.
It's a separate bucket of the plan, right? And that's a great question about Medicare and, and how that runs side by side. It does. So if the person decides to go on Medicare or retires and goes on Medicare, they also have this HRA that they will take with them. Now that means the county will stop contributing because they're retired. But whatever that bank account, essentially it's a bank account, has in it is their money and it's a tax-free benefit to them. So again, if I'm on Medicare, I'm now sixty-seven years old. I've retired from the county. I have ten thousand dollars in that. Now ten thousand dollars is a tax-free benefit to me that the county gave to me that I can utilize for my prescriptions, my co-pays, my co-insurance, uh, you know, whatever it might be. That Medicare is, because we, even when you're on Medicare, you still have to pay, you know, certain dollar amount essentially. But yes, from that fifty-five to sixty-five essentially is a separate bucket of your current plan is what it is.
Okay. So what is the difference technically between the HRA and the HSA? Because both are tax-free. One's a max, I'm assuming. I got you.
Yep. It's how, yeah. And that's a great point too. One is a max that you're, you know, X amount of dollars that you can set aside. And an HRA, it's actually on you, the county to decide how much you want to contribute to them. Essentially it's a perk to the employee to have. So there's no limitation when it comes to that. When, when you're speaking of the retiree HRA. I mean, to me, it's a way to try to migrate, um, people over to Medicare essentially. And then have a bucket or have a safety net that they, you know, have the X amount of dollars that they can still use.
Got you. So there's a way to incentivize that move.
Yes.
Prior to retirement.
Yep. Yep. Exactly.
And how do folks on the dependent, I'm sorry, the, um, uh, what do we call it? Significant other? What, what are usually the requirements for, um, you know, determining eligibility?
It's pretty broad now.
So is that up to us?
It is to an extent. Um, I would say ninety, ninety-nine percent of it is up to you on what, what you want to say. There's not like, hey, how long have you been together? Um, have, you know, how long have you lived together? You're not going to run into any of those. It's up to you. On essentially the county on, on how you want to cover that.
Okay.
And I'll just say, this has come up a lot. So we see this situation. It's pretty common in twenty twenty-five. A lot of people are divorced. They do not want to get remarried, right? Because they've been through the financial downfall. They've rebuilt their lives. They're established. They're in a committed relationship. Maybe they've purchased a house together. They blended families with children, right? And maybe one, let's just say for example, is a small business owner, someone else. They just want to provide insurance coverage. And so we're seeing that more and more and people are coming to us. We're one of the few places that, you know, kind of doesn't offer that. It is pretty common.
Very common. Very common.
Just because it's common doesn't make it right. I would not, I would not be on board with that. And I can tell you why.
Well, that's what I actually ask about. I've been through a divorce. I'm living with somebody and I'm able, I would be willing to pay to provide that care for her.
Well, there'd be people like you and like these families that are doing it for the right reasons, but also I think it would encourage government fraud. A lot of people are getting benefits for the government. If they get married, that will cancel that. So I would have an extremely hard time getting on board.
Well, I mean, if we set the parameters and I'm not arguing for, I'm just saying in my position, there's other people.
It's good, good, but then you'd have eighty percent of people taking advantage of it in the wrong ways.
It's the right way. I mean, again, we, if we set the parameters.
We, yeah, we set the parameters too, right? But I, I understand your concern on that. I really do.
Be difficult for me to get on board.
I know other states have legislation on what defies or defines a domestic partnership. Does Georgia presently have anything that determines what that is or how that's the definition of it?
Yeah, very state to state.
Because what I worry about.
And not to my knowledge, but that's something I can definitely.
Georgia Power has a.
Yeah.
Way that they define it, so.
I think we'd also have to have a determination of, you know, if you, if you're married and you get divorced, well, that's a legal document that says you're in a loan. But all of a sudden I say you have a falling out, you know, and somebody just, I'm leaving. You know, so there would have to be a qualifying event to say now, all of a sudden, you know, this person and their children are not going to be covered anymore. Well, what's the, how do we determine, you know, when that happens and that all of a sudden we are, are not paying anymore and, you know, that type of thing. I think we'd have to have some.
And I think that's what you're saying. Like we could set that, yep.
Well, I, I think we have to be careful how we set it too, because we're using public monies. So it's kind of like, I can't exclude anybody because part of that person's a taxpayer as well too. They may not have the same, you know, moral beliefs or whatever we have. So it would almost be like we would open ourselves up for potential litigation if we excluded somebody just because we didn't agree with how they live their life, whatever it may be. I think that, you know, with, with the Affordable Healthcare Act and things like that that are presently out there, I know people take advantage of personally that are, you know, single. Um, it's very affordable. Well, depending on how much money you make, of course. I mean, it's all based on that, but, uh.
I mean, we can start with this. So, uh, we work with other counties, um, me specifically, not in the state of Georgia, many counties in the state of Florida. We have baseline kind of parameters that are set. I could bring those to the table just to kind of give you a baseline of what it looks like. And then we can walk through it essentially.
Right. I think it'd be different if I was a private corporation, then I can define my own rules because I'm there.
It is different.
Right. Versus I'm collecting tax money.
Yep. Yep. Absolutely. I understand your concern. I understand, you know, your position too. It is a very hot topic in, in the healthcare industry. I'll put it that way. It's very common, uh, for corporations or counties, entities to, to cover that.
That's why I asked if Georgia had legislation, if that was the case.
I'll find out for you.
You know, a guideline to go by that time to.
We'd have to hire Elon Musk to police the thing.
Any other questions? Um, I know I kind of went back to the, uh, domestic partner situation, but yeah, any questions about that before I get into, uh, the imaging center piece of it? Okay. I have some takeaways for that though. I'll, I'll make sure to follow up with Sarah with that. And then obviously, you know, we need to meet again. We can walk through that. So. So this, uh, imaging center discount program, I think is pretty unique. Uh, it's something that hasn't been around very long. Maybe the last three or four years, I would say, right after COVID. One of the, this is just one of the vendors, uh, that we're, I'm bringing to the table. I'm not going to bring every single one right now. Know the cost. Uh, it's headquartered here in Georgia. It's really unique. Uh, so I'll just give you an example. I have to get an MRI on my knee, right? Well, if I go through the plan right now, I'm going to have some type of co-pay or co-insurance, depending on the plan I'm on, and me as the employee have to pay it. And then on the backside, Effingham County is going to incur the rest of the cost. That's the way that works. Somebody like know the cost, the vendor know the cost. Uh, they're contracted with all accredited. I should say that not everyone, but accredited imaging centers. And what happens is if I'm an employee, I gotta get an MRI on my knee. I get the documentation from my doctor and then I get ahold of know the cost. There's an education piece there. How to, you know, you got to teach your employees how to do this. You can upload it online. You can reach out and call them or you can email them. What they're going to do then is reach out inside your radius, X amount of miles. Typically it's fifteen to twenty miles if they can find one that's an accredited, uh, radiology center. And they will schedule it for you, right? So they're going to schedule the MRI for you or they're going to schedule the CAT scan for you or whatever it might be. The employee's got no co-pay, no cost. Your plan has no co-pay, no cost. It's a, it's a free benefit essentially. How do they get paid?
How do they, yeah.
How do they get paid? So they are contracted. That's why it's not every radiology center, right? They are contracted with certain ones and they get a kickback on the end from the radiology center to them. That's how they get paid. So for you, for the employee, it is something that, and there's no minimum participation. You know, you have six hundred employees, one employee uses it the whole year. That's fine. No employees use it the whole year. That's fine. Essentially they are getting a kickback from the radiology center by referring or getting people to go to them essentially. This company, and the reason I picked know the cost, one, because it's headquartered here in Georgia, two, I've known the owner. He actually used to work in this side and essentially he saw a way to make money on the backend. With obviously helping out not only companies, counties, entities, uh, but the employees themselves. So it's an education though.
Now there is, there's a cost though to the county to sign up for this, I'm assuming?
There is no cost. There's no contract.
Anyway. I mean, is there any reason not to sign up for this?
In my, in my professional opinion, no.
Cause I just went through this with, I have a high deductible. I, I just called her and I said, look, I'll pay cash.
Yep.
They won't take it.
Yep.
They said, no, it's twenty-five hundred dollars or whatever it was. And I'm like, that's what you charge my insurance company. My cost ain't going to be that. But anyway.
Yep.
So that's, uh, that's something I think we should definitely look at.
It never matches what it should be. Like when the insurance company, when you get that back, it's a fraction of the actual charge they give you. Cause it's, there's, there's.
Negotiated cost.
You get a negotiated cost up ahead of time. So if you don't have insurance, your cost, cost is gigantic compared to an insured cost.
I would say we go to Atlanta and have a full body MRI for less than it was going to cost me to have a CT scan.
Because they're giving you a real cost when you do that. Cause they know you can't.
Paid out of pocket. They wouldn't, they wouldn't let me pay for it locally.
Yep.
Weird.
I know.
I wish everybody had this. This is great.
And that's why we wanted to look into it. Cause a lot of employees, that's the issue they have is with billing, you know, no matter where they go. And so that's why we asked them to do the.
I got stuff I pay for myself.
Aren't they supposed to get some kind of like now legislation of knowing what it's going to cost prior to?
That's true pricing.
Right.
But yeah, we have a lot of billing issues with Effingham Health. Um, a lot of employees come and a lot of times they get a call the night before, hey, you have to pay seven hundred dollars or we're not going to see you tomorrow. And they're like, you know, if I would have known this a month ahead, I could have set up payment.
Or they want you to pay ahead before you even get there.
Exactly.
They say, I will give you a twenty percent discount if you go ahead and pay now. I said, well, I want my insurance to, to discount it and see where I'm at.
Yep.
I might have met my deductible. They're, they don't even consider that. Oh, okay. Well, that's okay.
Yep.
And then.
Yep.
And so they do.
Not the Nocker Hospital. I love our hospital. They, they treat me really good.
I mean, is that.
I'm a frequent flyer.
Exclusives to just Effingham Health or?
Um, we're, we're, most of our people try to go local because they don't want to take a full day off to drive to Savannah or to drive to Statesboro. So obviously it's convenient.
The care is great.
Then they run into, three weeks later, they're still fighting a billing issue. Come to us. We're, we're, we reach out to Maritain or USI to try and figure out the coding issue. We work with the billing and it's frustrating because the hospital also works with Maritain. So we're like, why can't we just get on the same page, guys?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I just got a refund last year for preventative health.
Yep.
That they're not supposed to charge me every time I go and they were, but yeah.
They shouldn't have charged you. Yeah. Yeah. But then again, it becomes a hassle and yeah. So yeah, with this, uh, the one thing too is they call it balanced billing in our industry. When you get an invoice that you weren't expecting essentially, you're not going to get that. If you go through, and I'm just again, using know the vendor or know the cost as the vendor right now. They handle it all. They handle it all. They schedule it. Now, one of the questions, and I get to see this here and there from employees, you know, how long is it going to take? Like, you know, if my doctor right now refers to me, I can just go maybe tomorrow, the next day. There's, I can't guarantee the timeframe, but I can tell you right now, I have never seen anything over fourteen days, uh, from when the doc, when they submitted it to know the cost. But again, they're not going to get, they're not going to get a bill. They're not going to get something in the mail that says, hey, you owe X amount of dollars. And again, it's all really done on the backend. For, for the employee, it's go to your primary care physician, get the documentation that you needed done. Get ahold of, you can get ahold of me, Sarah, or know the cost. We'll get it uploaded. And then they're going to call around within your zip code radius of twenty miles and, and get you in. So.
Do we know if a local hospital participates in it or not? Do you know?
I don't know that. And I do know I did some research on this and it did seem like a lot of people from here had to go down to Savannah to get this done.
I think it's Savannah or Belafonte. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. That's.
That's fine.
Yeah. That's what it looked. I'll, I'll do more digging into it, but you know, I briefly Dino myself who like.
I mean, it's an option if you have to pay inconvenience to drive a little further than, or be it.
Save that kind of money. I'd drive an hour.
Yeah.
Drive two grand.
Yep. Yeah.
Well, they had that imaging, I mean, Pooler down there by Costco, they have that facility.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
That wouldn't be as bad of a drive as going to Savannah Hospital.
Yep. And I'll look that up and see if it, you know, if that's in the network of this.
I mean, that's much closer.
Yeah. I'm actually staying in the pool right now.
In our network, in this area, just so, you know, it's easy to facilitate.
Fewer dollars imaging.
Are you asking who's close to us?
Yes.
Uh, Pooler, there was two locations in Pooler and Statesboro had a location.
Okay. So that's, yeah, it's relatively.
It's an hour either way, depending on traffic.
Yeah. Right. Right. So.
Better chance with traffic in Statesboro, right? Never know about ninety-five.
Get the same the other day.
But some machines are better than others. I can tell you that. Some emit more radiation than others when you're getting scared.
True. That's true. And I think that, you know, not speaking of the machine, but you know, making sure the facility you go to is accredited is important. I mean, and that, and that is the one thing that everybody that's on their list is. So, um, trying to set some parameters there. But and, and the final thing I'll say on this, this is nothing, this does not have to be implemented, implemented at open enrollment or in the first of the year. This can be implemented whenever you want. The only thing I'll say to that is educating the employees, right? And if that means me and Sarah driving around and, you know, office to office and meeting people and, and, you know, trying to explain this, giving them my number and that. But the employees have to be educated and they have to know, like, why is it benefiting them? I've rolled it out before and, you know, they're like, oh yeah, it's great. And then they never use it. And, and then you look at the claims data and that and you're like, man, there were so many people that could have utilized this. So how do you educate them?
They have mobile applications and.
Do they have mobile applications and things for this?
This, this vendor does not have, uh, they essentially just do it off the website, email or phone call is how they do it. Now, once it's scheduled, they'll not only call back, but they'll send a text message if they, if the employee opts in and then also an email confirming their.
Do we have a, and I'm just asking, because my company has it, a single source place for employees to go for their added benefits, you know, a website so they can hit all the, a dashboard basically for.
Yeah, we're uploading all that into Paycor, but also right now USI has, they get that flyer orientation, it was in your folder.
Yeah, that one, it's right here.
Carry it with me everywhere.
I'm still waiting for some of your stuff, yes sir, it's in there.
Yep, yeah, eventually Paycor is going to be the single source though, where you're going to find not only your, your benefit information, your payroll information, all those, you know.
Got you.
Okay, you know, retirement, all that, so. Just to go back, I mean, those are really the four things that have really came to the forefront right now. Again, that HSA, high deductible health plan, going alongside the FSA there, your dependent care, you know, is more for families that, you know, that, you know, have children or dependents, your domestic partners and then that gap coverage, I, I think is something that really could be a conversation as, again, I don't know the age of, you know, the average age of the employees, but I see it enough that I know once, you know, once, you know, the workforce gets to a certain age, it really, really affects the plans, the cost. Uh, so putting in some type of incentive for the employees to eventually drive over to Medicare with having, you know, money and resources that they don't have to pay out of pocket is huge. And then that imaging center discount program, again, know the cost is just the vendor I selected, uh, that there's plenty of them out there and this isn't something that's been around forever. Like I said, it's only been around probably three or four years now. I like to see kind of how it works before I just throw it out to everybody, uh, but I have other companies that utilize it and in my opinion, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer to at least sign up for and doesn't cost you anything, so. That's all I have, I, I'm here though for questions or comments.
And I know you guys were asking, so I did Google it. Georgia does not have a statewide law governing domestic partnerships.
Leave it up to the individual.
Cities and counties, yep, so it would have to be an ordinance that we would adopt to govern us. So we would put, put Steve to work, you know, if we wanted to do that, you know?
They don't have anything else to do with ordinances right now, so, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I can just, so on going back to the high deductible uh, health savings account, uh, plan, when you compare how those perform versus traditional plans and uh, let's say more um, buy-up plans.
Yep.
For the, for your, for the employer, um, do they, are they generally more affordable? Fewer, you know, fewer claims because people are, it's their money that's kind of coming out of that account?
Exactly.
Uh, so they're, they're watching it a little bit harder?
Exactly, yeah, I work with other employers that try to drive employees to that, um, for that exact reason. It, it kind of puts the onus on the employee, um, to be a little bit more cautious at saying if you need medical care, you need to go get it. But yes, a high deductible health plan, if you had the majority of your employees on something like that, you would see your claims cost go down significantly for the county.
So yeah, so your per employee per year is generally lower on that plan?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Um, and then when the employee leaves and they have a balance, what, I mean, who holds the money?
They do.
The.
Yeah, so they have the balance in the account?
Yeah.
They do, they, they take it with them.
Basically get a, I get a credit card in mine.
That's exactly what it is, it's a debit card.
So you get a basically a credit card with a balance of whatever's left.
Yep.
And that's kind of, and, and except when you leave, it essentially turns more into a FSA at that point where you're ca, where you only, where you don't have, you don't have to reach your, you don't have to reach your deductible before you spend the money, once you leave with it on the card, right?
So, not, not necessarily. So i- if, I'm, again, let's say I'm an employee here, I've been an employee here for the last five years, I have a ten thousand dollar balance on my health savings account, my, my debit card.
Yeah.
A bank account. I leave here and I go to a different company and I get on their plan, that ten thousand dollars that I have sitting there, that's, that's mine. It doesn't matter about my deductible, like I could go.
That's right, that's what I'm saying, so it almost, you know, by you leaving almost like free, it's almost like rolling over your 401K.
Exactly.
You get full, you get full control over it at that point.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Yes, you do.
But you still have to send in receipts for qualifying expenses and all that.
Like a flexible spending account.
Correct.
I do, yep.
So my, my last question, this gets a little bit in the weeds, so if you're on a family plan, you leave, it, does that just go with the one individual who was the?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, for me, I have four, four children and a wife, I've been on HSA for the last seven years. Anytime I would leave or whatever it is, that it's in my name, right?
Okay.
So me and my wife split, whatever, it's.
Go pounce in.
Yeah. Exactly, so, yeah, yes, it is the, in the employee's name.
Got you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, well, I appreciate everybody's time, um, I got some follow-ups for everybody and need to meet again, we definitely will.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from you guys, if not, have a motion to adjourn?
So maybe.
I actually just.
Take it, man.
All right.
As she comes back, I'll get started.
We call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is now five oh-two. Madam Clerk, do you mind doing a roll call?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Floyd.
Here.
Commissioner Burdette.
Here.
Chairman Ron.
Here.
Commissioner Deloach.
Here.
Commissioner Helmly.
Here.
Commissioner Kiefer is not present, but you have a quorum.
Madam Clerk, do you have anyone for our invocation this evening?
Yes, sir, we do. Joining us this evening is Pastor Billy Whitaker of Compassion Christian Church in Rincon. Billy has been a member of the Compassion for forty-four years, serving as a deacon for fourteen years. He served in a variety of roles before God called him into full-time ministry in two thousand and twelve. His prior years consisted of the restaurant industry, serving twenty-seven years as an Arby's franchisee. He left corporate America to go into ministry full-time as the children's pastor at Compassion, where he has served for the past twelve years. In August two thousand and twenty-four, he was asked to step into the role of campus pastor, where he now serves. Pastor Whitaker is married to his wife Tracy for twenty-six years. They have four children, Lauren, Nicholas, Emma, and Andrew. Join me in welcoming Pastor Whitaker.
Thank you for having me here this evening. Specifically, I want to thank Commissioner Burdette for inviting me. We are compassionate and grateful for you and for your family and for the way you guys serve within your church. So, thank you. And let me tell you, I do not, as a pastor, envy you gentlemen or you women that serve as our county commissioners in any way. You know, as a pastor, our lives are always scrutinized and always under a microscope, and people are always looking at us and judging and making sure that we're living our lives in a godly manner. But I will tell you, I went in January dark on social media, just had enough. And part of that is just because of all the stuff that takes place on social media. But in that, I realize I have a great respect for each and every one of you and the sacrifice and the way you serve our community. And so, thank you for the way you choose to serve your community. I know, like myself, this is something that you chose to take on. This is a responsibility that you chose to do, and I hope that God honors you and your families and our community because of the sacrifice and the decisions that you make. So, thank you. I'm also thankful, though, that God, when he created us, he didn't just drop us into this creation that he made and just said, hey, go, have fun, enjoy this wonderful place I've created for you, be fruitful, multiply, enjoy it all, try not to mess it up too much. But instead, he gave us his word, right, as a guide, as a roadmap, even as an instruction manual for our lives, for every aspect of our lives, for everything that we do, including government. Proverbs twenty-nine-two says, "When the righteous thrive, the people rejoice." And I'm sure you see that, right? When you make good decisions that everybody in our community is happy with, everybody's thriving, everybody's complimenting you and everything, right? But this also goes on to say that when the wicked rule, the people groan. And I'm here to say, I am not here to judge you, okay? I know many of you, and I know that many of you are involved in many different aspects within the community and within your churches as well, and I am not here to call you wicked. But I am here to say that you hear the groanings of our community, I'm sure, in many different aspects. And so, thank you again for the way you choose to serve. This scripture reminds us that when there is good leadership, like each and every one of you, that our community, it will bring peace and bring joy. But when there's corrupt leadership, it causes suffering. When it, in Romans thirteen-one, verses one through seven, it says, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except that which God himself established." That, the authorities that exist have been established by God. I believe, I take that very literally. God placed you in this role. Now, you have decisions and choices that you have to make, and I pray, and our community prays, that you make decisions that are honoring God and our community and above all, God in all of that. But it reminds us that government is a part of God's order, and you should be respected. You should be respected because of the decisions and the sacrifices that you make. So, thank you. And so, as we prepare for tonight's meeting, I just want to pray for you commissioners that you will continue to lead with integrity and bring joy and peace to our community. But I also want to pray for our community, that God, that they will be reminded that it was God himself that established this government. And whether they agree or disagree with you, you deserve to be respected. So, let's pray. Father, God, we are so grateful for you. You are a sovereign and just God. We are grateful that through the death and the resurrection of your son, Jesus Christ, we can have forgiveness of our sins. But Lord, first and foremost, I just want to pray for these commissioners and their residents of Effingham County. God, I pray that you would move in their hearts. And if they don't have a personal relationship with you, if they cannot call on you as their personal Lord and Savior, I pray that they would seek that with their whole heart and choose to have a relationship with you. But God, I pray for these commissioners. Lord, I pray that they will continue and always lead from a position of humility and with integrity, that they would first seek your will and your direction, God. Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom beyond their own years, that as they make these decisions, Lord, that they make decisions that are honoring you, not for any personal gain, not for any personal gain, for any man or woman or corporation, for that fact, God, but, God, that they would make these decisions so that you would be glorified, so that your kingdom would reign here on earth as it is in heaven, God. And Lord, I also pray for our community. I pray for Effingham County, God, Lord, that they would continue to seek you and keep their eyes focused in on you, God. I pray that we would be mindful as a community, Lord, that it is you who placed these commissioners in their role. I pray, God, that we would treat them with the utmost respect and that we would treat them in the same way, Lord, that you, that we choose also to be treated, Lord. And so, Lord, I thank you. I thank you for all that you're going to do. I pray that these commissioners, Lord, will not only make wise decisions, God, but as they make these decisions, Lord, that it be the decisions that you would have them make and that you would be honored in all that they say and in all that they do. We pray this all in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, a pledge. Commissioner Burdette, do you mind leading this, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. All right. Item number five, agenda approval. Consideration for absolution to approve the agenda. Madam Clerk, we have some changes to our agendas tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and board members, we have several changes. If you will go with me to the third page. New business number one, which is a tax refund request by Caesar Luis and Kimberly Lopez. The applicant has requested to withdraw that item. Additionally, attorney advised, items number five and six under new business, which are ordinance discussions. Those items are to be removed from the agenda. Item number ten, which is a contract and bid award for Paul S. Atkins Company Incorporated, related to the Central High School renovation project. The request by staff is to postpone this item to April first. And on page four, last item under new business, number fifteen, uncalled master services agreement with TerraCon. The request at this time by staff is to remove this item. And under our planning board section, the one item we have for Kayden Gower for conditional use for a rural business for a kennel and dog training facility at three twenty-two Satinwood Road, the applicant has requested to withdraw. So, this would be items number one and two under planning board. And those are your changes, sir.
Very good, thank you. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
With the, with the changes.
With the noted changes. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, the motion carries. Item number six, minutes. Consideration to approve the March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Any questions or discussion, if I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries.
I'll abstain, just, I wasn't here.
Understand. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Very good. Item number seven, public comments. Comments shall pertain to the agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, coolly state your full name into the microphone before commencing to speak. Correspondence. The agenda packet for this meeting is posted on the county's website. Any additional documentation presented in the meeting shall be submitted to the clerk for receipt, recording, and distribution to the board. It appears we have an appearance tonight on item number nine, Tony Monopoly. Are you here, sir?
Yes, sir.
Great, very good. Mr. Monopoly, we're going to allow five minutes for your presentation, and it'll begin whenever you're ready. Yes, sir, yeah, please approach.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Tony Monopoly. I've been a resident of Effingham County for over twenty-five years. I'm concerned, as a senior veteran, father of two county public school teachers and grandfather to five county public school students, about all the negative impacts Musk and his Doge team may have on our citizens here in the county, including the ninety-three-hundred county residents sixty-five years and over and the fifty-seven-hundred residents under sixty-five with a disability whose self-security payments and eligibility may be affected. The fifty-nine-hundred veterans in this county who may experience disruption in direct services, outreach, and critical medical and scientific research supported by the VA. The over fourteen-thousand public school students in the county whose educational experience and outcomes may be harmed by massive cuts in and the intended dissolution of the Department of Education. The seventy-seven-hundred residents under sixty-five without health insurance that will be impacted by severe cuts to Medicaid. Musk and his Doge team were handed vast powers with virtually no transparency or accountability. They have gained seemingly unlimited access to our highly personal and sensitive information and systems. Musk and his team have severely and indiscriminately disrupted federal departments, agencies, programs, funding, and people, all without regard to contextual and institutional history and under the pretext of increasing government efficiency and eliminating waste, fraud, and abuse. I believe it is a pretext because I don't think that is their ultimate goal, however commendable these goals might be. Musk is a house-on-fire deconstructionist, stripping away significant parts of the federal government structure until, in some cases, only the studs are left standing. I believe these actions are flawed, dangerous, and in some cases, illegal. The real questions for the citizens of Effingham County and the country are what do we want the federal government to do? And how does it, how much does it cost to do those things? the federal government to do, and how does it, how much does it cost to do those things? Think of it as our Goldilocks and the Three Bears problem, an outsider who determines how much of the administrative state is too much, how much is not enough, and how much is just right. Those are not decisions Musk, who is unelected and unconfirmed with multiple conflicts of interest, and Doge should be making. It is up to us, the people, and our elected and accountable representatives in the House and Senate, who should be asking these questions and exploring answers. I believe it's not too late, and there is still time, for our representatives to unequivocally invoke their Article One powers, to legislate and exercise their power of the purse, and not sit on the sidelines and essentially abdicate its powers to Musk. After all, Congress is a co-equal branch of the federal government under the United States Constitution. Congress needs to do its constitutionally mandated duty. Therefore, I'm asking the Effingham County Board of Commissioners, in keeping with its mission statement, to adopt a resolution insisting that our House and Senate representatives tell Musk it's their job, as elected members of Congress, to legislate on the continued relevance, efficacy, and purpose of federal departments, agencies, and programs. It's their job, not Musk's, to determine and pass appropriate funding levels supporting their legislation, and it's their job, not Musk's, to ensure that funding levels are complied with. By doing so, my hope is that the interests of our county's residents are forcefully and faithfully recognized and safeguarded. And one final comment. One more aspect of this process is the, what I consider the denigration of public servants. Musk said of USAID that, quote, "It was a criminal organization," and that its employees are, quote, "An arm of the radical left globalists." Our current director of the OMB, Russell Voight, said, quote, "We want the bureaucrats to be traumatically affected. When they wake up in the morning, we want them to not want to go to work because they are increasingly viewed as villains. We want their funding to be shut down," unquote. I don't know about you, but I think that we are better than that. I consider you folks public servants. And I think it's a wonderful call. And I thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and present my, um, my presentation.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number ten, consent agenda. This section shall include all routine items for which there will be no discussion. Should an easo arise for debate, the item can be moved to the appropriate area of the agenda. Item number one, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm the lease agreement for a Dodge Charger for the Effingham County Sheriff's Office as replacement. Item number two, consideration to approve the award recommendation and execution of the service contract for twenty-five dash RFP dash zero seven five EMS ambulance, excuse me, EMS billing services with Elevos EMS Acquisition Group LLC. Item number three, consideration to approve the updated terms and conditions for the Johnson, Mirman, and Thompson Incorporated Agreement related to the Goshen Widening Project. Item number four, consideration to approve amendment number one to the I dash seven B Hodgville at Blue Jay Road Roundabout Construction Contract for J.A. Long Incorporated. Item number five, consideration to ratify and affirm change order number one for the Old River Road Maintenance Resurfacing Project due to modifications in lane closure scheduling during spring break and the addition of asphaltic concrete open-grade crack relief interlayer. Item number six, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm the agreement with TerraCon Consultants Incorporated for geotechnical engineering services related to the Ron Station Resurfacing Project. Item number seven, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm the TOAST POS Agreement for Clarence Morgan Gym and Sand Hill Concessions to ensure modern, efficient pavement processing of these facilities. Item number eight, consideration to approve the ratification of two lighting service agreements with Georgia Power for the installation and maintenance of LED lighting at the parking lot of the Effingham County Administrative Building.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number eleven.
I'll have to step down for this one.
Yes. Unfinished business. Item number one, consideration to approve an application by Forrest Floyd for a variance from section three dot three dot one located at one-ten St. Matthews Road to allow for an increase in the required height of an accessory structure in the R-one zoning district. Map number three seven five D, parcel number thirty-nine in the first district. This was postponed from our three-four-twenty-five meeting. Just presenting.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, can I call him Forrest tonight?
Sure.
Okay. Forrest Floyd requests a variance from section three point three one A to allow for the reduction in the required height of an accessory structure in an R-one zoning. It's located at one-ten St. Matthews Road, as you can see here on the map. And on the left, you have a picture of the structure. So, pursuant to appendix C zoning ordinance, Article seven planning board, variances may only be granted if the following findings are made, that there is a unique physical circumstance or condition, including irregularity, narrowness, or shallowness of lot size or shape, or exceptional topographical or other physical conditions peculiar to the particular property, and that the unnecessary hardship is due to such conditions and not circumstances or conditions generally created by the provisions of the zoning ordinance in that particular neighborhood or district and where the property is located. So, the applicant requests a variance from section three point three one A to reduce the required height of an accessory, excuse me, increased, uh, rehired, quite, uh, the required height of an accessory structure R-one zoning. The maximum height currently states at one-and-a-half story or fifteen feet above the finished grade in either an R district or a PDR district, thirty-five feet in AR one and AR two. So, this is an R-one, and the variance he is asking for will be for three, um, more or less, almost three-and-a-half feet. The accessory structure is eighteen-point-six feet and one-quarter eighth inch feet tall. So, it was continued, as the chairman said, from March eighteenth.
But we are looking at addressing this overall at some point, though, aren't we? Yes.
So, I've had, we are, you've been pretty busy with accessory structures, mainly in R-one or other districts, not necessarily in AR one, AR two. So, we've advertised, um, we think we've come up with a good solution for the rest of the R districts. So, you will see that at the next meeting. But until then, you know, this, this is still a variance request.
Be one case at a time.
Yes. Any questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Floyd, you have anything you want to add?
Sure. Forrest Floyd. Good to see y'all. No, I'm just trying to build a garage. I had to go through the HOA and meet their requirement, which is to match my roof line and my eve height, and doing that, it put me over what the county had. So, once I got approved through the HOA, I turned in my plans here and found out that I was in violation of that. So, I'm asking for a variance, even though we are going to approve it. I've been trying to get this done for about nine months. I'd like to move forward if we can.
Got you. Is there any others in your neighborhood that are similar?
Oh, yeah, there's some that's.
Got you.
There's quite a few, if you look around, accessory buildings that's over fifteen feet tall, so.
Thanks, sir. Anyone here in opposition to this? Being there is none, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the variance.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion carries. Item number two, second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Forrest Floyd for a variance from sec, section three dot three dot one located at one-ten St. Matthews Road to allow for an increase in the required height of an accessory structure in the R-one zoning district. Map number three seven five D, parcel number thirty-nine in the first district.
And I'll just make a quick comment, too, on those second reading, but, you know, since the applicant did meet with the HOA and he met with their requirements, um, I think that's good on his part, and, um, I don't have any issues with it. I should have said that on the first reading, but with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion carries. Yeah, I think that's a great thing. Maybe we should consider reaching out to some HOAs and seeing what their requirements are so we can kick this down the road. Very good. Moving on to new business. Item number two, a consideration to approve a proposal for upgrading the CCTV security system at Effingham County Prison.
Noel Webb, T. Director, staff request approval of the proposed CCTV security system upgrade at Effingham County Prison. The system will integrate with the existing surveillance infrastructure used by the Effingham County Sheriff's Office and jail. Staff recommends alternative one.
Noel, the only question I had on it, just 'cause, I know, um, is, um, is the presence network switch infrastructure supportive of this? I mean.
So, we will have to upgrade some of the switched equipment, but that's.
But that hasn't been incre, included in this.
That's not included on this.
I didn't see it in the proposal, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, that's not included in this, but we had plans already to replace that switching equipment.
Well, that could coincide about the same time.
That will.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions from the commission? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a, uh, go ahead.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number three, consideration to approve an application by Jack Wilford for a site plan for Ignite Kingdom located at one-seven-four-five Georgia Highway Seventeen South, map number two-nine-seven, parcel number five-nine-C and five-nine-D in the first district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, back in early two thousand twenty-four, the board approved a site plan requirement for commercial and industrial buildings. So, this is falling under that as a, uh, commercial building. They request approval of the site plan, which you see right there. It's going to be two phases. Um, at the February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting, you did, um, grant a variance for the buffers on this piece of property unless it converted back away from the church that's located there now. And then, uh, the applicant will do phase A, which is a forty-two-hundred square foot building with septic and well locations, and that's the current site plan that you see. And then, there will be a Plan B, um, which will be a parking lot, detention pond, and , uh, things that will come at a later point in time. Um, and currently, they're, they are holding a service out there in temporary structures, and then, the, as soon as they can get this built, they'll get rid of the temporary structures. So, they meet the criteria of the ordinance, and so, this is a staff recommendation.
Thank you, Steve. Any question from commission? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve alternative one. Support it.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion carries. Item number four, discussion on creating an addressing fee.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pamela Melser. I'm the GIS manager. Um, this is a discussion for creating an address fee. Effingham County's GIS department is required to maintain accurate address data to support the easy and rapid location of properties by law enforcement, fire, rescue, and emergency medical service personnel. Uh, currently, no fees are assessed with the applications for addressing. The estimated staff time required can vary, but averages a minimum of one to one-and-a-half hours for individual applications. This includes assisting with application submission, plot plan review, building site suitability, and reviewing Platts. In two thousand twenty-four, the GIS department processed approximately one hundred and eighty-three individual address applications, uh, which is not inclusive of subdivisions, industrial, and commercial units that were also addressed. Um, in the staff report, you'll see a breakdown of the fee schedule, um, and if you have any questions, I'll be to answer them.
Fee schedules, zero to fifty and fifty-one, is that per?
Yeah, so, if you would have a, just an individual residence, um, someone coming in to build a new home, they would fall within the zero to fifty. Um, something like subdivisions, if they have three hundred lots that need to be addressed, they would fall into the two hundred and fifty-one to five hundred.
So, in that case, it'd be four hundred per address?
Uh, appr, so, the way we broke down the fee on it is the five, fifty addresses with an estimate of two minutes per edit in GIS, and then break that down by hour rate at the lowest rate of a GIS person that's capable of doing that edit, and it gets you at about forty-one dollars per, um, fifty addresses.
So, that's per neighborhood, basically, when you get larger?
Yes. So, as, as you ask for more addressing, more for subdivisions and that type of thing.
So, it's not a per-unit fee on the line, it's, it's from zero to fifty, it's going to be forty bucks.
So, if you have ten, it's forty. If you have one, it's forty.
Yep.
Okay.
Got you. It just seems like everything an applicant has to go through to build a house, that they wouldn't have to go through all this to get an address. Seems like all these boxes would be checked well before that. But, not trying to be the bad guy, but it just, I, I don't know. It just seems like it would be easy to get a nine-one-one address.
Well, we're dealing with something like that right now, aren't we, Beth?
I mean.
It's extremely difficult.
It is extremely difficult.
Is this the stopgap piece to expedite this presently?
Um, I believe, um, in speaking with a clerk, um, if it's discussed today, then it would be added to the final, um, fee schedule that's being updated, I think, uh, at the next meeting.
Got you. Just for clarification, the issues, and do you mind discussing what your issue was presently for with this?
We've just got a lady, and I think she's dealt with, uh, Commissioner Hellman more than me, trying to, uh, Miss Cook, I believe it is.
Yes.
Trying to, but I, I don't know if it's on our end, the post office end, I don't really know. Beth has taken the lead on that, and I appreciate that, Beth.
Well, I mean, I, I can probably go.
I was going to say, if you explained the process a little bit, then, then that would help me.
So, really, what dictates where an address, where a home's address is, is, um, the, uh, United States Postal Service and the, um, uh, and the whoever the postmaster is, right? So, um, a lot of times, we'll run into an issue, um, it, like in this particular case, where you've got one parcel that fronts on one street and backs on another, um, and then, uh, for whatever reason, for the second address, um, uh, we didn't have any records that it was, um, when it was added. So, everything was going to the, to the wrong address. On corners, um, uh, you know, that, that's really determined where the front of your house is, um, and, um, and sometimes we have to, uh, you know, kind of debate it with the, we have to look on the maps, figure it out. Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's not, but ultim, the ultimate decider, uh, on that is the post office, uh, and if they feel we've done it wrong, they will tell us, and we will have to correct it. Uh, and, um, but, um, but once something comes in for an address, that really is the indicator for us for the, um, for the site review, uh, and that's, um, kind of where, uh, site review with regards to GIS, uh, and that's where, you know, kind of the, the labor comes in. So, when it's a neighborhood and they're all coming simultaneously, uh, it's, it's fairly easy to do, but the one-offs basically take, take almost as much work as a neighborhood. Um, unfortunately, it's, you know, it's maybe, uh, like an hour on average, and then, um, two minutes per, per address. So, it's just, uh, it's just, it's one of these things that, um, uh, do, is it something that we, um, since a lot, since a lot of this work in a county that's growing like us, uh, is, is initiated by developers? I know a lot of times it's, there are some smaller individual houses, uh, in there, uh, but most of the work that we do, uh, uh, but most of the work that we do, uh, is, is developer related and should that cost be a general cost for the county? Uh, or should be a cost that is incurred by the, uh, applicant? And so that's kind of the, you know, the debate that we had and which is why we're, this is more of a discussion for us because we, we would have to bring it back to, to adjust the schedule of fees.
I was gonna ask, um, when was the last time that we reviewed our schedule of fees? And how can we, um, basically, instead of isolating this out as something separate, how can we modify it to just integrate this cost, administrative cost into part of your application fee? And it being based on, you know, on this schedule of fees, instead of having just a, a separate line item per se for, for, for finance to have to keep up with, how do we include it and integrate it into the application fee?
And, and you could. Um, some people do get addresses without, um, eventually building houses, um, vacant lots, for example. Um, but, you know, we, uh, we, we, we could increase the, um, uh, either the permit fee or the site fee and have a per lot fee on there. There are different ways that we can integrate it. Um, we, we just figured this was, this was one way on a, on a per, per applicant basis to do it.
And it would also make a difference, of course, with the number, you know, what you're talking about, you know, pretty be just a general fee. If you were building five hundred houses, it'd be X.
Well, I believe we could still integrate this, this assess fee table into that portion of it, um, with the modification of it. Um, I was just thinking of it from an accounting standpoint of, you know, there's a line item in your ledger for this and then, you know, you got a ledger item for, for this and just if we could collectively just group it all together.
Well, and I think it would be. I mean, I think this would be, for the most part, collected, um, simultaneously with other fees. Uh, and so, um, you know, similar to the way that a tap fee is collected, you know, right around the same time as a cost recovery fee and the meter fee and so on and so forth. Um, you know, they just stack on top of each other. Um, you know, that this could be collected simultaneously with other fees, uh, if the application was coming in at that time, um, or it could be done individually. So, um, either which way.
Yeah, just making sure it's not like going to the hospital and all of a sudden you get much of different bills as you, you know, after you leave and you think you paid them all. So, very good.
Do we know if surrounding counties are doing the same thing? Is it pretty typical?
Um, yes, uh, Bullet County has a addressing fee. Um, I did reach out to Chatham and Savannah. They do not. Um, I think they actually integrate it, kind of like you're discussing with the building.
Permit fee.
Yeah, so the addressing, um, step is the first one, once we've gotten the open gov system and we maintain everything in there that allows the applicant to then do a building permit. Um, they need that address in order to do that. There are a few applications where you don't actually need that and you can just utilize a latitude and longitude to do the application. Um, but the addressing is the first step in getting to that building permitting fee.
I see. Gotcha.
I think it, you know, we overlook this a lot of times with the, the GIS and how important that is until you have a problem. And, you know, it affects everything. If you call an ambulance, if you, you know, if you, if you deliver packages, which we all do. Aside from a fire, anything. And I think we overlook it and at least I probably did until I started dealing, you know, with Mrs. Cook, who's been very nice, you know, and all of it. But, you know, I said, well, gosh, you know, I usually don't have any, the problem I have is they just don't want to deliver down my road. Sometimes it's not like they can't find it, but, um, you know, it's very important, the work you do. So appreciate you doing it.
Absolutely.
Any, um, further discussion from the board, collections?
So do we want to look at this or do we want to look at merging it? What's your thoughts?
I'm, I'm just curious, when was the last time we did an assessment of our fees to make sure?
We do it annually.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we usually do it, uh, at the tail end of the budget cycle.
Okay.
Um, and so, and then, you know, the board, you know, right after, either at the same meeting as the budget or the meeting after will approve the schedule of fees.
And maybe that's the time we look at our administrative overhead and make sure we're capturing all our costs at that time and, and potentially integrate it into this. I mean.
Yeah, and, and I generally tell folks that's when we need to implement it is when we do the schedule fee annually. So this way we don't have to repost it.
Right.
Um, you know, we, you know, the, uh, the animal shelter is requesting a change of the impoundment fee and so then we're, we're waiting on that one till July.
Sure.
Yeah, the only caveat to that is if you want an address and you're not planning on building anytime soon.
So we do, um, address, um, items. We request that people also have the intention of pulling a building permit with it. Um, if they don't pull that within the six months, we can expire the address, but it still stays in the GIS system. They can just email us or put an application into, um, uh, reactivate the address, but there wouldn't be any fee associated with that just with a new application.
Wow, okay. Sounds like a lot to back it back out.
Quite a bit of data.
What is your suggestion?
Um, I would, I would suggest doing the addressing fee. Um, it is something in open gov we can put in there as a line item. We do currently have applications for, uh, mapping fees and I think it would fall into the same bucket as it's collected through the open gov payment system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I don't think it would be an additional light item for accounting wise. Um, but it could also be integrated into the building permit fees, but it would be then later on when they actually pull up our building permit.
Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any, uh, further discussion from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry, no motion. This is just discussion, not a correct.
All right, very good. All right, moving on to item number eight.
Seven, like.
Oh, I'm sorry, item number seven.
Consideration. I'm gonna, um, I'll take over this one. I led Jonathan have the, um, night off, um, because his wife had a baby. Um, but, um, um, I expect him back in first thing tomorrow morning. No, just kidding. He's gonna be out for, uh, he's gonna be out for a couple of weeks, but, um, the, a little girl, um, her name is Eden Lydia, um, named after the community in his favorite, uh, commissioner's district, so. Uh, if it was, if it was a, uh, if it was a boy, it would have been Meldrum, so. Um, so on the, um, this is a change to the truck route ordinance. Um, and so what we've tried to do is, um, uh, try to include some of the, um, some of the issues that we're hearing that we're having from, uh, from the code enforcement sheriff's office, um, on, uh, enforcement and figure out ways that we can have a more, uh, successful ordinance. Uh, a little background on this, um, there is a state law with regards to driving trucks on, uh, county roads, uh, restrictions on that, uh, but it is weight based, uh, and you have to have scale system, uh, in order to enforce it. Uh, so it's, and up until last year, we weren't even allowed to have scales, uh, as a local government. Um, so the board in response created an ordinance that was based on classes. Uh, and, um, uh, and so, uh, this, um, and we've had this for about, uh, four years. And we, um, we think that, you know, these changes will actually, uh, help. One of the things you'll notice, uh, in there is that, um, we've adjusted the signage, uh, rather than simply, uh, putting, you know, vehicles class five and above or what have you. Um, we just put, uh, a, a very simple no trucks, uh, with the no truck, with the truck with the cross, um, through it, uh, ordinance, uh, on it. Uh, and so it just make it, uh, simpler to read, uh, and simpler to see. We've also, um, uh, changed some wording, particularly with, uh, the, uh, one of the terms in there, uh, has the trucks going, that if the trucks are going in the general, uh, direction of their destination, um, uh, then, uh, they won't be, uh, they will be exempt from the truck ordinance, uh, from the, uh, enforcement. That becomes very difficult to enforce. Uh, and part of the reason we had to do that is because the county does not have uh, ample amounts of, uh, truck routes, particularly ones that go east, west. Uh, and so, uh, it, it, it kind of forces trucks coming from, uh, one state route, truck route to another, onto local roads. Uh, and so we are eliminating that general direction language. Um, but on the flip side, we're also expanding the roads that are in the truck, uh, road, route network um, to include, uh, roads that we are currently either under contract or about to go under contract for, um, upgrading, uh, to freight standards. Uh, and they include, um, uh, certain sections of McCall Road, uh, and Blue Jay Road, uh, and a small section of, uh, Sand Hill between Blue Jay and eighty. Uh, and so, um, with that and the elimination of that, um, general direction language, uh, essentially that if you're not on, if you're on a local road in a truck, you have to be on the route to a truck route. Uh, you can no longer be using local roads, uh, as a general means, uh, to get to your destination. Your destination has to be, if you're on a local route, you have to be, um, you have to prove that you're on your way to a truck route with the doc, and you can do that with documentation, um, uh, such as bills of lading. That's all in the ordinance, the existing ordinance. Um, so those are the changes that we have, uh, on this. Uh, we've already started updating most of the signage. Uh, we just wanted, we just wanted it notated in the ordinance itself. Uh, but staff is recommending alternative one, which is approval.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. Any discussion from the board?
Yeah, Tim, I appreciate the work you've done on this. I know after speaking with the sheriff several times, it's gonna be a big help. For whatever reasons, some of the signs just weren't, they weren't picking up on the signs, so this, this would be huge. I don't know if we wanted to add something in there that, um, requires them to avoid neighborhoods, like if they're trying to hit that shortest route. I don't know if we wanted to include that just for more clarity or you think that would muddy the water?
Well, we actually have to, I mean, what we might, what we might want to do is when we re-look at this ordinance, um, because we may be adding, uh, routes to it in the future, um, uh, that we could look at that language and just amend it, um, in the future. I don't know how to, how I would word it.
Yeah, I, I don't either. I was just kind of thinking out loud today and, and maybe a second thing if, uh, you know, they're not allowed to use alternate routes to get from one truck route to another. You know, here's a shortcut from one truck route to another. How it's just going to the, you know.
I got what you're saying, yeah.
That's the only other, everything else I think would be covered pretty well. It's simple and signs are way better.
Yeah, I like the simplicity of that sign, no trucks.
And just getting, getting them closer to the, the turns, you know, so they can see them before they turn.
And we're gonna try and put riders. Now, we can't put it on state routes, um, uh, but, uh, we're, we're gonna try and put riders on all intersection notification signs, um, uh, that just tell you no trucks on it. Just so there's no question marks.
I appreciate it.
Part of your professional, I, and I'll defer to you, Roger, because I'm not sure, um, is, is knowing your roads as a driver, correct?
It is, and a lot of times they pretend not to know their roads just so they can travel where they want to. You know, time is money in the industry, obviously, and fuel and everything else. It's very high cost to run, run a truck. So you'll get every excuse.
So ignorance is not a defense in other.
No, it's not, because, uh, I, I tell you from experience, unfortunately, that being in other municipality areas, uh, these guys get tickets and it doesn't matter whether they think they're in the right place or not. And when you get a ticket of this nature in, in other municipalities, it's expensive. And it goes on your points on your, uh, your federal motor carrier license. What we call an SMS report, so it's a, it's a big deal. But, you know, we, where our roads aren't designed to be a truck route in a lot of these places and we're trying to update them to get them to a truck route standard, if they're gonna be, so this, this is welcome.
Thank you. Anything else from any of our commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
No, um, I will say something.
Hmm?
Um, I don't have any trouble with the ordinance. I think it's good the way you, you know, written it and let's say you may clear up some of the wordage. We may do that, but why is Ron Station Road on here? Because.
It shouldn't be that, um.
It's on here. At least it's on mine.
Yeah, it's included as, uh, item number in.
So I don't understand why that road's on there. The other ones I can see.
It, 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 uh, and I, I apologize. Um, I did not catch that. It should not be on there. It is going to be recommended for upgrades, but since we do not have a contract out or even a design in place right now, we figured it's more than a year out, um, to that design and so, uh, that's why I had recommended it not be on there. And so if, uh, if that's the case, I apologize. I would actually recommend approval with that removed on it. Thank you.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one with the exception of, uh, Ron Station Road being deleted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, the motion carries. Item number eight, consideration to approve an acknowledgement of assignment between Baker Hill Partners LLC and FZV Financial LP.
Uh, yes, and so this is, uh, simply, um, uh, the assignment of an existing agreement that we, um, uh, that we agreed to with regards to, uh, cost share of extending, um, uh, uh, water and sewer, uh, to a site. Um, they've since sold it, so therefore they want to assign it to a new, uh, entity.
Good. Thank you, Tim. Any discussion from the board? Then I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number nine, consideration to approve an agreement with Goodwin Mills K Wood LLC for architectural and engineering services related to the expansion and renovation of the Effingham County Animal Shelter.
Good evening, Trey Wilkins, project manager for the county. Um, this is just really the next step in the process of getting our animal control facility, um, renovated and expanded.
And there is a, um, uh, there, there is a change that you don't have on yours. Um, it, it shows it as a percentage of the project cost, um, uh, but they're required to put a not to exceed number on that. And so we have that and that is what figure? And it's in, we looked at the figure, the figure's in line, uh, with facilities as size.
Yeah, the, the total contract amount is four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Did you say that figure again, please?
Yes, ma'am. Four two seven, two two five.
That's to not exceed.
Correct.
Trey, can you send over the revise so we can make sure the right one gets signed?
Thank you. Any discussion from commission?
Just a quick question. What, how would this be funded on this part? Is that a sheriffish, uh, line item or is that something different?
What'd you say?
The, the animal shelter itself, the funding.
Oh, the fund, that's a, that's a general fund item. That's a countywide service, so, uh, we put it on T-splosted, uh, under the countywide list.
T-splosh, okay.
I'm sorry, sploshed.
Yeah.
Sploshed under the countywide list.
So I'm gonna have a highway through it?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's gonna be a running track with it on there. Very good. If no further discussion from the board, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, the motion carries. Moving on to item number eleven, consideration to approve a resolution zero two five dash zero one two to surplus vehicles, machinery, and equipment which have either been replaced or are no longer in use by various departments.
Good afternoon, Danielle Carver, procurement and contracts manager. The county periodically identifies broken, unused, or outdated equipment that needs to be properly disposed of in accordance with the Georgia Code Section thirty-six dash nine dash two. The resolution before the board declares various surplus items, including vehicles, machinery, and equipment from multiple departments, allowing for their public sale, disposal, or donation. So staff recommends alternative one.
Good, thank you. Any discussion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number twelve, consideration to approve an enterprise lease agreement for the replacement of a Dodge Durango for the Effingham County Sheriff's Office.
Yes, sir. Um, the sheriff's office is requesting approval of a lease of a twenty-two Dodge Durango, SRT three ninety-two. The sheriff's office is requesting approval of a lease of a 2024 Dodge Durango, SRT 392, through Enterprise FM Trust under an open-ended equity lease agreement. The vehicle will enhance operational capabilities for traffic suppression and interdiction, replacing a unit that can no longer handle the demands of this work. The original staff report, quote, reflected a total amount of $75,394, but this did not account for the $15,000 gain applied from a prior unit. So after applying this credit, the corrected capitalized amount is $63,394. This correction may not be reflected in your packets, but we, it, I did send, it was, okay. Thank you. So staff recommends alternative one.
Very good. And is Durango going to be the fleet moving forward, or is this just an individual? Are you replacing chargers with Durangos, or is this going to be a mixed fleet, or?
This, the Durango that we're actually taking out of our traffic enforcement unit? And we're going to put it on patrol because it can't handle what it's doing, and I can give you some numbers on that. So we acquired that vehicle in October of 2023. It's got 12,000 miles on it now. It spent 260 days out of the 445 we've had it in the shop. It simply can't handle it. That is like 58% of the time we've had it. We've wasted $8,000 of your money, this car sitting in a shop because it can't handle what we do with it.
Sure.
That's the reason why we're requesting this other vehicle that's a more high-performance vehicle. It's going to, it, it's going to improve our ability to, to enforce traffic, keep the county safer, apprehend.
Bad guys.
Apprehending fleeing felons. It's going to make everything better for that. The, the car simply can't handle it. So we're going to keep this one. Now, we are.
So you have just a regular Durango now, and you're moving to the SRT models?
It is a police Durango.
Gotcha.
And we have them on patrol, and the ones on patrol are having issues too. But the traffic unit, it just can't handle it.
Understood.
And this came up in conversation the other day with the sheriff as well. All, all the Durangos having issues, overheating issues in some of them?
Yeah.
They have problems with the brakes, pretty much everything. But the ones on patrol, we're keeping them going. But for traffic, for the tight work it does, this is what we need.
Yes, sir.
Understood. Thank you.
Why is the, why, why are trucks better? You're saying this is a?
Yeah, this is a Durango.
It's an SUV.
Oh, it's SUV.
Mm-hmm.
Why, if you're having all these issues, why are you getting another one? Why don't you go to another?
Because it's not the same thing. It's a complete different animal.
SRT's a, a higher.
Well, I understand, but I mean, still.
Yeah, but it's maybe upgraded, upgraded brakes, upgraded.
That's the only thing available to us. It's the best thing available to us that we can replace it with.
Okay.
From my conversation, yeah, my conversation the other day, that they're running out of options to even purchase vehicles for the police force. And not, no other brands are stepping up and making anything.
Not making like bigger transmission coolers, radiators.
Well, the SRT does.
That's what this has.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the SRT steps.
I'm talking about other brands.
Other brands now.
This has more enhanced coolers, brakes, the engine is a lot larger. It's just better for the job. It's made for this.
Understood.
Can handle performance.
Yes, sir.
This going to be yours?
No.
No, it's not?
Thank you.
I'll say your name for the record, sir, please. Your name for the record.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Sergeant First Class Danny Harrington.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
If no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Item number 13, consideration to approve a contractual agreement between Effingham County, Georgia, and Southeast Corrections LLC for the provision of probation services for State Court of Effingham County.
Sir, this agreement with Southeast Corrections LLC would provide probation services for the State Court. The agreement ensures compliance with Georgia Code Section 42-8-108 and Department of Community Supervision standards while maintaining critical services such as case management, fine collection, drug testing, and electronic monitoring. The contract term is March the 10th, 2025, through March the 9th, 2030, with a monthly supervision fee of $45 per probationer. Fees are paid by probationers, ensuring no cost to the county. Approving this agreement secures continued probation supervision and supports public safety and judicial compliance. Staff recommends alternative one.
Very good, thank you. Judge Cullen, did you want to approach and have anything to add to it, or if not, we can move forward? Just want to give you the opportunity. Very good. Any questions from commission?
Oh, motion to approve alternative one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Item number 14, consideration to approve a quote for the procurement of GeoConex CAD system, dispatch viewer, and hardware for the new emergency operations center.
Yes, sir. EEMA is moving to a new EOC loc, located at the Clarence E. Morgan addition, and will no longer have easy access to the dispatch console at 911. This purchase will enable EEMA to add a new dispatch workstation in the emergency operations center to improve dispatch efficiency and emergency response capabilities. This purchase includes the GeoConex CAD software, dispatch viewer, and hardware, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Item number 16, consideration to approve a quote in a service agreement with Rico USA Inc.
Yes, sir. Effingham County's current copier lease and service contract with Rico USA Inc. is set to expire. To ensure uninterrupted service, staff recommends approving the new 60-month lease agreement through Omni partners, a cooperative purchasing program that secures cost savings, regulatory compliance, and efficiency. The new contract will increase the monthly lease and service cost to $6,587.27, reflecting an increase of $382.41 per month while maintaining the same overage rates. The agreement includes the addition of three full-size copiers and a large desktop printer copier, as well as replacement of all current machines to improve reliability and efficiency. After multiple discussions with department heads, it's been confirmed that the current machines are aging and frequently requires maintenance. The technician is performing repairs more often, leading to downtime and inefficiencies. So upgrading the equipment will enhance operational efficiency and reduce maintenance issues across the county departments. So staff recommends alternative one.
Very good. Did we get quotes from other people besides Rico?
We didn't in this case, because we've been really happy with, you know, the quality that we're getting with Rico. The sales rep came out, she goes to each department, she was finding out their issues.
And it's state contract, it's also state contract.
Gotcha.
It is a state contract.
Gotcha, okay. Very good. Any questions from commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13, reports from commissioners, administrative staff.
Sure, I just want to go over just a few things. First off, on an update on the steering committee with regards to the ordinance review. We had a meeting last week, we also have a meeting this week, or, yeah, that's right. And so we are going to, we are making progress. We made, we, we, we met the last meeting, we wanted to kind of wrap up the recommendations for the business zonings, our coastal zonings, and the industrial zoning. We feel comfortable where we are moving forward. We're going to present those recommendations at the next meeting, and then we, at the next meeting, we're going to move on to the R districts, starting with R1. So we still hope to wrap this up and get something in front of you. Our target timeline is May, at one of the May meetings, but we do have to advertise any changes as well. So we are, we are making progress on that. I did want to give you an update on some of the projects that we're working on, and we will be emailing you out. We had a transportation advisory board meeting this morning. As many of you know, particularly in District 1, because that's where a lot of the work is getting done, our roads are, are finally getting wrapped up from our contracts from last summer. And then the contracts from the fall, they're just get, they're just getting started now. I think Hickory Knob was the first neighborhood they did in District 5, and then they'll be moving through those at a pretty quick clip. They started putting some, some of the cones up at around Old River Road to let them know that the work is going to start there. They're starting to mobilize on Blue Jay, and we should have two additional contracts. Oh, and we've already had the kickoff meeting for the roundabout at Blue Jay in Hodgsville. So that should be starting shortly. That's some of the cone work that you start seeing there as, as they prepare for that. The, also, the, we are wrapping up our final, our one final right-of-way acquisition for the Hodgsville and Colacelme roundabout. So we hope that we can get that done and get those out to maybe the second meeting. Though actually, we have to advertise first, so it'll probably be awarded sometime in the May meetings. And then we've got a very large road package coming out, two, two additional repaving packages coming out, about 20 some odd miles apiece for resurfacing in, I believe, at the first meeting in April. So, I'm sorry, second meeting in April, and we're also, also partnering with Rincon on that. They've asked us to include some of their T-Splost roads on that, so they're going to reimburse us. So there's going to be a lot of asphalt and construction work going on with regards to transportation this spring and summer, but hopefully we can get most of it wrapped up by the end of the year. And on facilities, we have, we have the final punch list this week for the gymnasium, and we hope to get finished on that, and this is the emergency operations center and the expansion. We hope to get that fully turned over to us in about two weeks. And then once we get all of the AV equipment, which is a separate contract that, that's being handled by our IT department, operational, we're going to have a, a nice ribbon cutting for, for that facility. I can tell you that emergency operations center looks absolutely unbelievable. It's, it's state of the art. And this building, it, with the exception of the monument sign in front, which was accidentally knocked over by some of the site work that they were doing, and so it has to be rebuilt, we're anticipating a, to start occupation of the building somewhere in the first week in April, wrapping up to full occupation by mid-April. And so if you've not been over there recently, it's starting to look absolutely fantastic, and I cannot wait to start operating out of a office rather than a conference room. So that, that's the update on our projects, but it's exciting time here in the county. Things are, things are really getting done. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
I, I have a question going back to the steering committee. Didn't we talk about having a, maybe a workshop sometime in there to do some detailed look at any of the changes that's being looked at with this ordinances? Didn't we?
Oh, for the, for the, for the committee?
Yeah, for the steering committee, to, for the commission to.
Yeah, so.
Start overviewing some of these things and.
Yeah, so the goal on that is to, in between us getting it done and while it's being advertised, is to have a workshop with all of you and maybe get the planning board here as well. So that way, by the time it gets, it gets to in front of you for a vote, if there's changes that need to be done, we'll know far enough in advance. But we'll, and, and also the hope is maybe we can, maybe we can get the biz, the, the B districts, the I districts, and the A, R districts out for approval prior to the Rs, but we just have to see what the schedule is.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with just progressing along because this is very important, but I am going to need some extra time to look at some of these things.
Absolutely.
So.
Thing else, Tim?
I'm good.
Very good. All right. I understand we have a need for executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Got a couple.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys, I skipped you.
The Meldrum Playground Equipment, I think we'd ordered, is it close to?
I think it's like April 9th or 6th or something like that.
Thank you.
I think it's a couple weeks before it comes in.
And on the Sand Hill, we are just in the, we're, I think we're putting the sod down on that, right? The remaining sod on that, and other than that, it's complete.
Mr. Burdette?
Yes, sir. Tim, I don't know if you had any information on the Saddle Club area, the road failure we had in Belmont Glen. I know Jonathan was.
Yeah, and so my, my understanding, I mean, it's, to give everybody a background, we had just resurfaced Saddle Club, and there was a base failure. It was related to, I believe, a, a joint was failing in a drainage pipe underneath the road. So unfortunately, in order to empty the pipe, in order to sec, check it, they had to drain the pond. We weren't aware of this before they did it. This is EOM, so, but we were able to refill the pond, so I don't think there was any damage to any of the equipment out there. But that's what, that's what caused it, was a, was a linking stormwater pipe. And I believe they've, I believe they patched it up, I'm not sure yet, I'll have to check.
After, get, just got saturated over time and then started failing.
That's right, all the, it started basically sucking all the ba, soil from the base out of it, and then it just collapsed.
Wow. The other thing was a lift pump station that we have on Windsor Road had a complaint that we went through a gentleman's yard. Didn't know if you knew about that. I think Jonathan followed up with me originally, of course, he's on.
Yeah, and I have to find out where we are with Jonathan. Jonathan did look at it. We actually have to upgrade that pump anyway, and so if they, if we had used anybody's property to gain access to it, you know, we would, we would have to repair the damage.
Trey, and we may, we may have an easement.
Tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
For like at EMA, we'll put out some more gravel.
And we may have easement there, and he didn't, didn't know it, so.
We actually have property on the lift station site out to the.
That's kind of what I figured, you know, we had.
I want to know if you just can start a plan with who you put up a split rail fence or something.
I see.
As he said, trucks are maneuvering in his front yard outside of our property.
Yes, sir.
We'll look at it tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner DeLuge, either of you?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Helmy?
I was just glad to hear that the transportation meeting this morning addressed the concerns from Low Ground Road, which has been an ongoing issue, and was told that you're going to do the chip and seal for the benefit of anybody that not know what that is. Would you just briefly say what that is so they'll know what we're going to do there?
Sure, and so since, you know, there's going to be some time to, to really get the right-of-way that we need to improve Low Ground Road, and we have to do design on that. We are going to, right now, the, the structure of Low Ground Road is a, is essentially a dirt base with an ash surface with a, with a chip seal, which is kind of like a tar and gravel surface treatment on top of that. That was put on post the, whatever that, that winter storm was. And so since it's going to be some time, we are going to put an additional layer of chip seal on that road and to get us to where we want to be. It won't be a complete waste because what the, the process we're going to be using for that road is called a full-depth reclamation, and so we're going to be using the entire base, mixing it with cement. is called a full-depth recclimation, and so we're gonna be using the entire base, mixing it with cement, and putting it back down, uh, so we're gonna be able to use that, uh, that material we put down as part of the new base. So, um, we hope to get that started within a month.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. Um, all I have is, um...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do have one item of notable mention, um...
I had you on the list, I was by the car.
Oh, oh, you're fine. Um, so the Board of Health has a, uh, vacant seat for a consumer representing the county's needs underprivileged or elderly community. This is a six-year term. It was formally held by the late Jeff Utley and has never been, um, filled since. So we need to take a look, as a board, at, um, someone in the county that you believe would be good to sit, um, in that position. This is the Board of Health.
Okay. Do we wanna set a, a deadline for this, since it's been vacant for so long?
Yes.
Okay. We can have our appointees and get with Mr. Kiefer as well, considerations, and then try to come up with a determination by the next meeting, it'll be feasible.
This is for a certain district, or...
No, it's not a district seat.
For the county? They need to be medically...
Yes, just for the county.
Trained or anything?
Yeah, what is the preferred...
Not in that capacity, not, not for that seat.
Is there any, like a, like a description of what the job is? Can you send that to us, please?
I can email that out.
Thank you.
What is it, what is it again? Sorry, I can't hardly hear you.
Board of Health.
It's, um, consumer representing the county's needy, underprivileged, or elderly community.
Very good. Anything else, Madam Clerk?
That's it, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, the only thing I have is, um, we had a incident with DRT, uh, I believe it was yesterday. Um, understand they were placing a flow meter, um, and, uh, in response to that, I've asked, um, and haven't got a response back from DRT yet, um, that anytime they do have a maintenance item, if they could contact the county, I know they're not, you know, they don't have to. But, um, I've requested, just as a good partner to the community, that anytime they do have an issue, um, it would save a lot of headache if the county could do a report out to the community, um, you know, noting that. So, we'll see where that goes. Uh, my house is, is still stinking today as a result of that, uh, maintenance issue. Beyond that, I have nothing further. Um, I understand there's a need for executive session. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, uh, to discuss property, personnel, and pending litigation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, that was a good answer, but I don't, and it was a test.